We'll go ahead and call the Johnson City Council meeting number 23-06 to order. Sam, roll call, please.
Councilmember Burkhart.
Here.
Cope.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Ready.
You.
Want to welcome everyone that is in the audience this evening, all of you one. If you're here for an item that is on the agenda, there will be an opportunity to address the council when that item comes up. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under public communications to address the council. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there anyone at the dais who has not let us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I don't think I have.
We have a volunteer.
If not, Clayton.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Martin. You know, I always enjoy doing this.
The next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval Mike. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes this evening. Thank you.
Counsel, any changes? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam, vote please.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhart.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Public Communications, the first item under Public Communications is an update on the Grow Solar Polk County program. Do you feel lonely tonight, Jessica?
I do.
We usually, we have a few people here.
That's good. You're doing something right if nobody shows up.
We'd like to think so. Either that or it's a really nice day out there today.
That might be the only nice day of the whole week.
Thank you again. I really came mostly as a thank you. So wanted to just start out with that for your support of the Grow Solar Program. As a refresher, my name is Jessica Maldonado. I'm here on behalf of the Nature Conservancy, who was one of the key partners that helped get this launched here in the Polk County area. So we're very thankful for Johnston, for saying yes, for jumping in, even hosted the kickoff event way back in May. So we really wanted to kind of just say thank you and provide a quick update and recap of the success of the program and preview a little bit about what we're thinking for 2023. So again, just to recap, we had 10 cities sign on for Grow Solar Polk County, which I think all of you can probably agree, anytime you have 10 different entities sign on to anything, that's a, that's a great feat. And we're very excited that there was that collaboration here in Polk County and across the region. We really appreciated all the strong support that went on through the program. But the exciting part is the numbers. So here's a quick kind of success by the numbers. 432 kilowatts of solar ended up being installed through the program. And again, this was just a few month period. So I think we launched in May, kind of went through August, September. So it was a very condensed timeframe for, for homeowners and businesses to have a chance to learn about solar and see if it was something that was right for them. That equated to 52 properties and 360 people throughout Polk County attended those solar power hours, which again, the first one kicked off right here, which was very fitting. Johnston's been a great innovative leader. I mean, this building we're standing in right now is a, is a great testament to that. But the exciting part is that actually equated to $1.2 million worth of local investment. And I think we maybe shared this way back at the front end of the program, but Zillow estimates that adding solar to homes adds about a 4% homeowner value to each home. So it's also kind of uplifting the value of the community as a whole is, as homes and residences go solar. So that investment by being made by individuals, but as a whole, it does lift those communities and help increase values of, of the home and housing stock overall. Um, last but not least, we had some great media attention. We had about 10 media hits from TV, radio, Dwayne Business Record, some stuff in the Dwayne Register. So it's great exposure for the, the cities that got involved. Hopefully great exposure to let people living in Polk County know that they were able to come learn about solar. Again, we want people to go solar, but that education was really the key part. So whether they want solar or not, just helping educate the people about clean energy and kind of the nuts and bolts was one of the main factors as well. Any questions about those numbers? We're very excited. I think compared to, I think Warren County, which of course was 2020, was a pandemic year. I think that was about 300,000 of local investment. So you can see Polk County really blew that out of the water compared to Warren County, a little bit apples to oranges. But we're really appreciative of all the cities because it wouldn't have been possible without your help communicating and promoting that to your local. Thanks to that success, we actually had a few factors because of the demand. We're going to relaunch it in 2023. A couple of things, there were some additional financing opportunities that came about from Neighborhood Finance Corporation that even maybe unlocked solar to make it a little bit more feasible for, for some lower income residents throughout Polk County. But another thing that happened, I'm sure you're all very aware, the Inflation Reduction Act passed last, last year, which extended that 30% tax credit for another decade. And it increased that it was at about 22%, I believe, last year. So that actually might make a decision for some people that maybe had said no before. That extra tax credit help might change that mindset. So there's just a few factors that have kind of, due to that demand, made us want to do this again in 2023. And we'd love to have the communities back on again. Again, hopefully very minimal staff time on your, your end is needed. We're hoping to maybe try to lock in partners by the end of April. So we could kind of begin that RFP process all over again, to make sure there's a competitive bid and competitive rates for people that want to go through the program. So again, really minimal staff time. We'd love, you know, highlighting the cities and facilities and your local communities too, through those solar power hours. So not too much, not too much new compared to the last time. Hopefully new financing options will even help it more feasible, make it more feasible for even more homeowners to, to think about going solar. So that was really the, the nuts and bolts of it. I should have mentioned out of that $1.2 million investment, about 105,000 came from Johnston. So you had almost a 10th of the, the total, which was great. We had a ton of engagement from Johnston citizens. I know on Facebook even, I saw people sharing stuff from Johnston all the time. So thank you. I know some of that came from you all too. So really appreciate all that you guys did and how to make.
So back on that first slide, you said there were 52 property owners. Do you, do you have a sense of how many of those would have been Johnston property owners?
I could get you a number. I want to say like six or seven when I looked at the pie graph. So yeah, so. And again, an average size, you know, depending on homes in different communities, a different sized home could be a different kilowatt hour, a dollar amount. So I think that 105 was made of six or seven properties.
Any other questions, counsel? Well, Jessica, thank you for being here tonight and sharing the update with us and look forward to continuing, continuing to work with you. You bet. Now go out and enjoy the weather. The next item on the agenda is a presentation from Bonsec Fumout about city's June 30, 2022 audit.
We have Sarah, I don't know if we have Sarah and Mia, but we have Sarah at least participating through Zoom tonight. And a short PowerPoint presentation that she will talk through that we're gonna hopefully click through for her. But on your dais tonight then was, was a copy of the audit, if you'd like to take it home for some nighttime reading, enjoyable nighttime reading or something like that. If you don't want your copy, you can go ahead and leave those for us. That'd be fine, but I'll let Sarah go ahead and, and talk down.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I think I'm sharing my slide.
Yeah, the slides are on the screen.
Perfect. Okay. The first thing I'd like to do is give the required communications from the audit. This is your June 30, 2022 audit. This year, we completed three different types of audits. The first one was the financial statement audit. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest form of opinion that you can receive. The second type of audit that we do is referred to as a government auditing standards audit. And the purpose of that is twofold. One is to look at your internal control system and to test it to make sure it's functioning as it was designed. And the second part of that audit is to look at your compliance with laws, regulations and grants. From the internal control, the highest level and more, most severe level of findings is a material weakness. The city did not have any material weaknesses. The second level where an error could still occur and not be detected timely is referred to as a significant deficiency. The city did not have any significant deficiencies. And the last level is controlled deficiencies. And these are maybe areas that are out there, but the city does have compensating controls in place. We've recorded those in a separate letter. They used to be referred to as more like management advice suggestions, but we like to bring them to your attention and to management's attention along with recommendations so that you can continue to improve your internal control system. So all in all, your government auditing standards audit was a very positive audit. To have no significant deficiencies and no compliance findings is really a great accomplishment. The last type of audit that we do is the federal single audit. And I think this is the second year the city has been subject to having a federal single audit. And that's anytime you have more than 750,000 of federal funds. This year, the city had 1,335,000 of federal expenditures. We were required to test your COVID-19 coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, which represented 1,319,000 of those dollars. So very significant portion of your federal expenditures. That also is a, is a very clean audit. We had no findings, neither internal control findings nor compliance findings. So all in all, a very clean report. If I can get this to change. Thank you. I'm having trouble. Okay, great. Okay, so the governmental funds revenues this year, as you look across the bar, property tax increased slightly by 396,000. That was all in your taxable assessed value, which increased 3%. There was no change in your tax rate. The, really the significant bar to look at is your other city taxes, which almost doubled this year. So it increased by 2.6 million. This is primarily sitting in your local option sales tax. And it's true for, for most governments this year that that increased from 2.6 million last year to 5,285,000 this year. And the last item I wanted to point out was your miscellaneous, and you'll see that there's a significant increase there. This was primarily a result of insurance reimbursements and the city was hit a few times this year. These funds are primarily your hail damage that was from July. The next graph is your governmental funds expenditures. And as you look across there, you had a pretty similar year as far as the normal functions of the city. Debt service this year paid 20.6 million in principal and about 4.4 million in interest for governmental funds debt service. Your total outstanding general obligation debt as of June 30 was 140 million. And last year you had a refunding, which kind of skews that number last year a little bit. And then also capital outlay and you had, you had some very active projects going on last year, including the Merrill Hay Road improvements and 54th Avenue improvements. And then the last thing I was going to touch on was your enterprise funds. Your water funds net position increased about 2.5 million. Sewer fund net position increased about 3.4 million. And the stormwater net position increased about 4.8 million. And a lot of this revenue includes capital contributions. In total, it was about 7.5 million. And that's a combination of developer contributions and also projects that are funded from your capital projects fund and your governmental. But really, thing I look at with these enterprise funds is that all three enterprise funds generated positive cash flows from operations. So that means they're, they're covering their depreciation and other operating expenses with the fees that they're charging. So all in all, a really clean audit this year. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, have any questions?
Mayor, I do have some questions, not for our auditors, but, but just generally within staff. So if you're ready for those as well.
Does anybody have any questions for the auditor? Councilman Burkhart?
Thank you very much. There are two controlled deficiencies that, that were enumerated within the separate letter. I don't recall if we've had those in the past, but in the past, how have we handled those? For instance, one of them seems to be something that could maybe be referred to a, the HR committee or something like that to look and consider to find some solutions. Perhaps you even want to speak on it tonight. I would be curious to know at some point in the future what our compensating controls currently are in place with regard to those water receipts and lack of segregation of duties. And even to the extent of, do we have some IT-based ways that we can continue to monitor and audit that internally as far as potentially some changes?
Right. We, we have already taken these issues to the HR finance committee. We did so last month.
Okay.
And specifically talked about the accounts receivable policy that we currently have and what we might need to change regarding the accounts receivable policy and the water accounts that were being billed for that we have not collected and, and how they want us to handle that. And so we're taking that back to the committee again. And next month, the issue is going to be, we want, we wanted some aging advice from, from the committee itself. And they asked staff to give them more data on that. So we are talking about brings. Regarding the internal control segregation of duties deficiency, that has, that's a constant. And until we have more and more staff, I don't know. However, I was, I guess even the city of West of Mine and their accounting department with 11 to 14 people gets it too. So I'm not quite sure how I'm ever gonna get over that one, but the specific issue that was mentioned this year has to do with the individual that does our utility billing, also collects utility receipts. We have one utility clerk and now our administrative assistant up front spends a great deal of, deal of her time and probably, we're talking about it, probably the majority of her time as a utility collections clerk, awaiting on people up front, more so than being an administrative assistant. Especially now with a new city administrator who, he does things a little bit differently than our previous city administrator as far as needing an administrative assistant. But, um, so we're still sorting through that thing. So the only way to get that one particularly cleared up would be to, at this point with the current personnel, would be to totally not have Marcy ever wait on customers up front. And that means I only have one other person that could do that and that person is busy with accounts receivable and accounts payable. So. You know, till we get more bodies, I'm not quite sure how I'm ever gonna get that. We, we have modified some things where, like last year or two years ago, I can't remember the year, the person who, who did the handle accounts payable was also the person who made new vendors in the system. Now people ask me, I make the vendors or Sarah will make the vendors and we don't do the accounts payable. Cindy, they, they took all the IT authority away from me. Not that I ever knew exactly what I was doing for IT, except in the, in the ERP process or the financial process. I used to have control over that. Cindy has that now. So she'll set up the new person for a, a new person using the financial software. I, I'm no longer able to go in there and, and put up this user or authorize that user to do this or whatever. With Sarah now being here, it used to be that I, well, before Brett and then after Brett left again, you know, I signed the checks and I was doing the bank reconciliation. That's not right. Well, now Sarah's doing the bank rec for me. She's not putting any receipts into the cash drawer. So we certainly talk about it all the time. And I, I have an auditor here on staff all the time now, who is constantly saying that isn't how we should do that and what can we do to make a change? So we talk about it a lot. The department directors will tell you that I talk about it a lot. I talk about public purpose a lot. And I talk about anything we can do to make those things go away. That's what I would like as well as you. So. It's, it's a work in progress.
It certainly is. And I applaud, first of all, the hire of Sarah to be able to be those eyes and second set of eyes. Not that you didn't already feel that and, and know that, but it, but it's helpful. It certainly is. From specifically an ERP or IT perspective, do we have, I don't even know if our software allows us to be able to audit, in other words, changes in that creation? And, and is that, do we have a policy of which we're then reviewing that or?
Yeah. And in fact, I, we can run in, in like our payroll or our utility or whatever, I can run an audit software or I can run an audit checklist. And what I will do as an example is run that audit list and potentially look up your utility account number for the mayors, make sure no one's done something for someone or themselves or something like that off and on throughout the year. That's just what we're supposed to do.
Excellent.
And we've been doing that. Same with payroll.
Very good. Thank you.
You know, and I think Teresa, your answer, your question is really helpful because, you know, and I, I think it's, everything's kind of a balance, right? You know, and you certainly want to, as much as you want to make sure that you don't get dinged in any way for the audit. I think you've done a great job of pointing out the extremes you may have to go to satisfy auditors is an extreme. Not even a city with a much larger accounting department has been able to meet. And maybe then that shows that maybe the standard is the issue, not the approach we've taken. So I think finding that balance has been well done here. So.
Any other questions or comments for Teresa or the auditor? If not, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Sarah.
The next item on the agenda is public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening, and that is to conduct a public hearing to amend the budget for the year ending June 30, 2023 and consider approval of resolution number 23-70. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:25.
No, I don't either.
Great. All right. Great. Thank you. Did you open, I'm sorry, Mayor, I was trying to do my thing. Did you open the public hearing? Okay, thank you. Tonight, we're talking about the first budget amendment for this fiscal year. We, as mentioned earlier during our budget work session, March 21 of 2022 is when we adopted the budget that we're working on right now. And so this budget amendment that we're doing tonight is, is addressing primarily some issues we had because we issued our 2020 to 2023 debt or our 22A bond issue prior to the close of fiscal year 22. And so that meant all of the bond revenue that came in for our 2223 CIP projects prior to July 1. So each month, as you have received our, my financial reports, you'll have noticed that we've had all this disparity regarding where we should be at in the budget and the revenue we receive. And that's because we already received it last year. And so that'll be fixed now that we get this budget amendment done. But in summary, what we're doing with this particular amendment is decreasing our revenues by 11,330,290 dollars. And that again is primarily bond, bond revenue. And we are decreasing our expenditures by 9,776,000 dollars. Again, on capital projects is, is although those expenses are increasing, the amount that is decreasing is our capital projects in our enterprise funds. So as Sarah mentioned during the audit, we've been, we've had our rates and we're building our rates based on our CIP. And those CIP is including some rather large enterprise projects in the next several years. And the timing of those projects still hasn't happened the way we thought it was going to happen. And so there's no reason to be anticipating 8.5 million dollars or the SRF revenue on a project that hasn't even been let yet. So we're making those adjustments in, in this budget amendment as well. And then the, the other large adjustment is that we always correct the beginning balance based on where we actually did in fiscal year 22. So we had anticipated that we would start this fiscal year we're in right now with a balance, a beginning balance of 49,486,000 dollars. We really began with a balance of 70,170,000. Again, huge increase of bond money on top of other projects. Cars, trucks, all these cars and trucks that we have ordered that we keep having to decrease or eliminate the purchase order, reorder from another vendor or, or auto vendors calling our department directors and saying, oh, yeah, well, you had that vehicle, but now it's gone again. And the frustration, I, I think you heard quite loudly at budget time on how hard it's been to get new vehicles. So those keep kind of getting pushed down the road. So it just changes in the budget. So what that, what that is, is an increase of over 20 million, like 20,684,000 dollars in our beginning balance that we had anticipated. And I provided in the packet for you tonight, in addition to the resolution for this amendment, I've provided detailed sheets by each program area of what was changing in the, in that specific area and why. And I'd be happy to answer any of those questions for you. I do, I do think one of the other notes of interest is although we're paying more on interest for our debt, you might have noticed that our interest income is up, our budget income is up about 400,000 dollars. So we may pay more, but we are earning more as well on some of our investments. So I'd be happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
Counsel, have any questions for Teresa?
I don't know that I have a question, but I think that you did a great job explaining it to me. As a landscape architect who doesn't deal with these kind of issues all the time, I could follow along. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. And I also think that this just shows that you do, you're doing a really good job with. The bonding, the timing. I remember we had some of these conversations where we were, we had some very good um, bond sales. So. I think this just is showing uh, good management. So thank you for that. It's always, it's always better to have more income than not. So.
Right, true.
I understand about not, not having it meet exactly where you thought it would be, but you've also explained why that happened. Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel?
Teresa, in here, there's a page from the library about proposed.
Yes. Is he online?
Was online.
So that's included in this as well, I think. Okay.
Did you have any questions about that? I guess Eric is on Zoom. He always provides a narrative for his um, budget amendment.
Yeah, I was just, because it was different than everything else. I just kind of.
He, um, I don't know, Eric, if you want to uh.
And I don't have any, I just, was just.
I think he does that for his library board.
Yeah, I just, I was, most of the things you talked about were not operationally, and this was operationally. So I just. I I don't, I'm fine. I I just was kind of. Was just, it jumped out to me because it was more operational, bonding, timing type stuff, so.
Any other questions? Since the public hearing on this item, is there anyone in the audience that would, that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 7:33. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 23 dash 70?
They'll move.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam Bolt, please.
Yes.
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 Motion passed. Moving on, moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm moved.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion.
I just, um, I know there was, we got an email from a resident, I think residents here about uh, item. G5G about the, the initial zoning application map uh, request and. I, since the residence here, I I intend to support this just because this just starts the process. Since it, that's all our regular standard process to send it. To planning and zoning and then they bring back a recommendation. And that's really at the final time when the council really reviews the item. So. At this point, it wouldn't be, I don't believe it'd be appropriate for us to not send this to planning and zoning. And that's why I do support that item. Just wanted to, since the resident raised that was here, I thought I'd. Outline that rationale.
But, but Linda, thank you for bringing your concerns to us early. And it's important that you share them with the Planning and Zoning Commission as well.
And just because we're sending it to planning and zoning to, that doesn't, it's not an indication. Of support for it necessarily. It's just a process. Right, I just want to make that clear.
But we want to hear what Linda has to say and certainly are all more than happy to sit down and have the conversation with her. Any other discussion? If not, uh, we have a motion and a second discussion. Uh, vote, uh, vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda, item 7A. Consider uh, consider second consideration of ordinance number 1090, repealing and replacing. Chapters 165 through 180, the Johnson zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. David?
Uh, good evening. At the uh, March 6th public hearing on this item. Uh, the council asked for some additional information and some. Relook of the, at the draft code in particular related to accessory dwelling units. Um, and the sort of specific direction was um, looking at whether or not that could be done by a special use permit instead of by right. Uh, and so included with the. Um, with the packet tonight is a red line version. Um, that's actually a relatively easy amendment to do. Um, in table 168.2, which lists our accessory uses um, for residential districts and the disc, in the uses in which. Um, which are allowed. Um, those were listed previously as PS, which is permitted with standards. Um, by changing those to an S, um, that would require a special use permit for those uses. Um, that would then require those items to go to the Board of Adjustment for consideration. Um, the provisions in chapter 177.01. Uh, would still apply for all of those and those would be part of the conditions that this Board of Adjustment would consider. As part of their review for any special use permit for those uses. Um, because parking was also um, discussed um, at that time. And since we're looking at an amendment, um, staff did propose a slight amendment to the parking. Um, as shown there at red line under number five. Um, requiring two um, spaces for the accessory dwelling in it and clarifying that all parking would have to be. Either within the structure or on a paved surface, just. Um, just for make, you know, clarity and making sure that that's a little bit more clear. And so.
Could you just outline how that works kind of in the real world? So, I mean, in a residential home, you have a driveway.
Correct.
So how do you allocate spaces in a driveway for?
Well, obviously, they'd be able to take account, they'd take, be able to take into account any garage spaces that they have available and any driveway spaces. Any driveway spaces. Um, this would have to be off street, so it wouldn't, you know, wouldn't. They'd have to show sufficient parking on their property, not on the street.
So basically, they took a photo showing I have a three car.
Site plan of their, here's how I can park four vehicles.
That's, so that'll be the process. Okay, great. Thank you.
David, on that same vein, uh, i- is there a reason we spent a lot of time on that uh, home occupation ordinance, talking about different surfaces by which we'd allow parking? W- was there discussion among staff as to why paved surface versus um, the, the alternate surface of. Kind of semi-permeable or whatever, but dustless, I think was the, the term that comes to mind.
Yeah, if you're, if the council's so inclined to make an amendment, you can, and we can clarify that language. I think it's paved dustless balance. Look it up.
I, I, the, the only reason I, in my mind.
Consistent.
Yeah, in in my mind, that would be the reason why is to try to provide some consistency there. And at the same point. I, I, again, I'm not, I'm not trying to raise an objection that Councilmember Martin has or or might have. But I know in the past, she's talked a lot about. Paving surfaces and and just the amount of pavement, especially if some of these alter, um, you know, dwelling units are such that. They're maybe not in use for full-time occupancy. So, thank you.
Uh, so that's, that's the heart of the changes that um, I believe were requested uh, by the council. As noted, the um, by becoming a special use permit, they would have to go to the Board of Adjustment. Um, that does require public notice. Um, it does um, require basically a public hearing before the board. Um, their decisions are brought to you typically under your consent agendas. Um, with the ability to remand it back to the board if the council is concerned with action that the, that the board has taken. Um, you have that ability to send it back to the board for consideration. You don't have the ability to overturn any action of the board. They are quasi judicial. Um, so that would be the process. Um, as I noted, if the council was inclined to um. Amend the ordinance, um, it would require first a motion to amend. Um, ordinance 1090, consistent with the red line changes. And then again, with that clarification on the paved dustless surface, we'll make sure that terminology is matching that of other places in the code. Um, otherwise, we'd recommend um, approval of second consideration of the ordinance.
Can I just ask a procedural question before we, so. As I understand what you're suggesting is we would have a vote. Somebody would make a motion to, to amend it. And we would have a vote, separate vote on the amendment. And then if that amendment is approved, then we would have a second vote on the actual approving the uh. The second reading. Is that the kind of the plan, the approach?
Can correct my Roberts rules, but that was the intent, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be the clearest record of what's.
Yeah, okay.
Changing and then yes, approve the second reading.
I just, I'm good. Sometimes we roll it on the one, but I'm good with doing it separately.
Given that we're adopting a 200 and some page document.
I agree. I, I, I like, I always kind of like doing the amendment separate from the final though.
And I wouldn't, and I, as noted in that red line attached, there's, there's actually. The amendments covered two places, one under chapter 17701, which is that. That clarification on the parking and the second part is table 168.
Point two.
Right. Oh, 168.2. And that table, just the accessory dwelling unit is being amended, amended.
So I'm, I'm going to um. Add something to the discussion or maybe go a little further into it. So Councilman Cole. Shared with me an email that he got from Michael, Matthew Lemke. Who was the gentleman who spoke very eloquently at our last meeting. About these accessory dwelling units. And I have to tell you in my background, all the way back to, I won't say what part of the eighties. When I was in school, you know, the thought that you would have granted, you know, mother-in-law suites or second. You know, a- accessory dwellings was kind of a cool idea because I'm thinking about urban areas and San Francisco and. And you're a student and why can't you live there and all that? Now that I'm a homo homeowner in Johnston and I got to thinking about how would I feel if my neighbors started. Filling in their backyards with dwellings. And I didn't like it very much. And I appreciated all the conversation we also had about parking because that is an issue. And um, this Michael Lemke, he, he came in if, if people requa- uh, recall. And he said, you shouldn't waive the review. Um, I forget what you call it, the special. Special use permit because at least it allows for the Board of Adjustment to review it. But he would not allow any dwellings in an R1 district is what he's, he, in this email that was sent. And I would, I'll forward it to Mike and you could maybe put it into the documentation. On this discussion. He said, we shouldn't do it at all. And I know that we have someone in the. In the audience who also is kind of concerned about the. The way that we are multiplying buildings or we're dividing larger properties into smaller and smaller and putting more buildings on them. And I'm somewhat in uh. They, you know, I, I know that when it goes to the Board of Assessment and if they decide that it's fine. The council has not a lot of ways to um, not allow that to go ahead. I mean, in the fact, isn't there some stuff in the past where we ended up uh, getting sued for not following along our own Board of Adjustments recommendation, I believe? Something to that effect. So what else could we do? To, like you said, it would go on the consent agenda. Uh, non-consent agenda, no, consent agenda.
Typically, they're on the.
I mean, maybe we should say if that comes up to the board, if that is an issue that the Board of Adjustment is reviewing, that it needs to be. Not on the consent agenda, but on the non-consent agenda, because then it makes it to a point where we are actually going to discuss it. Is there other ways that we can put a higher level of review? And I'm not sure even that would be served because again, the Board of Adjustment, if they make a decision and they go ahead with it, there's not much the city council can do. What would you suggest?
Well, first of all, I'm going to clarify. As proposed to be amended. Accessory dwelling units are permitted today under our current code by special use permit. So the amendment would continue that with the addition of specific criteria that we'd have to look at. So right now. If someone comes in under our current code and and wants to do an accessory dwelling unit under R175, for example, it goes to the Board of Adjustment. There's no criteria specific to an accessory dwelling unit. So there's no parking requirements. There's no, there's no size requirements. There's.
Right, and I appreciate that we're making, we're doing better.
This step would add specific conditions under which they're acceptable size and parking and those kind of things to make sure it's, it fits. Um, as far as the process of the review, Christine can talk about the sort of separation of. Powers between the board and the, you know, we can certainly put it on the non-consent. Um, and I would say 98% of the items that go to the board end up being fairly non-controversial. Um, you know, that, you know, and so that's why we've traditionally just put them on then on the consent agenda and. We've certainly had situations in the past where there was question or concern and those were pulled off and discussed. Um, we've sent things back, the council sent things back to the commission or to the board, excuse me. Um, but as far as overriding or. Um, you know, the, the council really under state laws is this, is separated from that ability to, to modify the actions of the board.
Yeah, and I'd just like to, I guess, jump in a little bit, a couple, a couple of things. One. You know, I think in a lot of ways, you can look at this whole approach to accessory dwelling units and I kind of a continuum. With the most lenient approach being kind of as it was originally drafted, that would basically say you could have an accessory dwelling unit by right. And really, no ability for the neighbors. The neighbors would sort of find out you were doing an accessory dwelling unit when they saw a hole being dug in your. You know, they could find out, but so that was kind of, that's kind of on one end of the continuum. And then the farther in the continuum is kind of the approach that Mr. Lemke is outlining, which would outright prohibit accessory dwelling units. Um, in, in R1 districts or whatever, whatever type districts. So those are the two kind of far ends of the continuum. Our, our current policy is kind of in the middle. Um, and 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 in fact, I think what the zoning, new zoning code does is it enhances kind of that middle approach by saying. It requires a special use permit, but also establishes some standards for the Board of Adjustment now to use to apply. So I, I think, I, I think taking a middle ground approach is the right approach to take. Because it does allow for a case-by-case review. And I, and I also, I mean, in essence, we've had this ability to do accessory dwelling units. As, as, as David just pointed out, in our code for the last. Up the, um, 10 years and we haven't been flooded with a lot of these types of requests, even though. This concept has been out there, kind of in planning circles for quite some time. So just by us adopting this new code, I don't think that that's going to trigger us getting a lot more. As far as the process and the Board of Adjustment. I, because I gave some thought to uh, Councilperson Martin to, should we, should we say, oh, it's got to go on the non-consent agenda? A- and I, the only thing is I don't like putting that like in the policy in the code because. You, whether, whether an item is on the consent agenda or the non-consent item is kind of by. There's no, there's no rules around that, okay? And so I think frankly, the way to do, I, the way I think we should, I would recommend us doing is, is. To take the approach that's outlined in the zoning code. I like the fact that it applies not only to R1, but also to RE, which are the larger estate lots. Which frankly, that might be where it's more appropriate, but we're taking it right off the fact, it's got to go, you got to go to the Board of Adjustment. And if the Board of Adjustment has one of these cases, the neighbors have to be notified. That's really an important part of this process. So the neighborhood, neighbors have an opportunity to contact the Board of Adjustment, go to the Board of Adjustment meeting, voice their position on it. And if they're not happy with the Board of Adjustment's opinion, then reach out to us. Now, we, we, I know that we have not upheld or over or remanded or remanded, is that's the way, way it works. Uh, an item to the Board of Adjustment, probably, you know, it's been. Seven or eight years. So I'm probably, I'm the only one in the mayor, who's not has any experience with that on the council, but it has, has happened. And whenever you remand an item to the Board of Adjustment, that does have some impact on. Um, and and that's the maximum impact we can have. So if we remand it and they've been in, they're in a room and there's 10 or 15 residents saying, we don't like this. And the council has sort of said, we don't really like it either. We remanded it back to you. I think that's a pretty good way to work the system. Um, so that's why I'm very comfortable with kind of this middle ground approach that we have. Uh, outlined here as opposed to an approach that outright bans it or or gives it by right. Um, and I think too, as we, as this policy is implemented. If all of a sudden, two of the, you know, now somebody's got to make a special permit, special use permit request to the city. And those come and they go to the Board of Adjustment, then we'll see it. We'll have the opportunity. I think, I think certainly it's appropriate for us to direct staff to say, hey, look. We're given the new zoning code. We have a heightened interest in this. So certainly don't let it, if it's, if there's one that's on the consent agenda. It'd be helpful if maybe we got flagged to it by the staff saying, hey, you want to make sure you're aware of. Item 5J on the consent agenda is an item that you might have some interest in. Because obviously, at any point, we can move it to the non-consent agenda. And I, and I, and I certainly, I would be very comfortable with adopting a resolution that might say for the first two years after this is adopted. All Board of Adjustment reviews related to accessory dwelling units should be on the non-consent agenda. I would be fine with sort of an ad hoc policy like that. But I don't want to, I, I don't think we should incorporate into the zone. Uh, but I, I do think this middle ground approach is the right approach. I, I, with all due respect to Mr. Lemke and his extensive thoughts on, on the issue.
So Councilman Cope, I appreciate everything you said and I, I mostly think that we're, we're getting to the same point. I will say this, though, even though we haven't had a lot of accessory dwelling units come up. units come up in the past, you have to realize that, you know, we're, we're scraping the bottom of the barrel of every square foot of available land to put houses on. We have a lot of people that want to live in Johnston, which, you know, I can understand. It's a great place to live, great schools and all that other stuff. So I believe that this dividing of lots and putting in, or putting in accessory dwelling units isn't going to go away. And, you know, you're kind of right in the, the non-consent area, you know, passing the resolution to say for the next two years, we want it on the non-consent. I think that's, that would be fine. But really, what is my issue with it? Not, my issue isn't so much with the neighbors. It is a little bit of the neighbors not, not, they bought a big property, they are out in this area where they have big acreages and they like that and they don't want to see it become chopped up. My issue is taking this open space and building, building, building. It adds to the stormwater runoff and all the other stuff. So I'm almost wondering, is there, and I'm going to vote for this on the second reading, well, we'll have a third reading. But what I'm, would wonder if the, David, if you, if you might look into what the effect of these accessory dwellings are in terms of taking away open space. What I'm trying to say is, the more we cover all the ground with her impervious dwellings and rooftops and paving and parking, the less that area is available to soak in rainwater.
One thing we did, so we've, we've always had accessory, accessory structures that are permitted. And they're quite large in Johnston historically.
Barns, sheds.
Barns, sheds, everything. Up to, up to an acre, you can have up 1,600 square feet combined of structures. What we did with this, with the, with the restrictions under 17701 was say, up to 900 square feet of that, between 300 and 900 square feet of that total that you could already have on your property can be an accessory dwelling unit.
So you've already dealt.
So we, well, and that was a conversation the commission dug into at one of their meetings. And they were, they were very adamant of, we don't want to, we're not saying you can have 1,600 square feet of building that's garage and shed and whatever, plus 900. We're talking about the same square footage. And so you can still have a shed, you, under the, under the provision, you could, you know, have, you have an up to 900 square foot of an accessory dwelling unit plus another 600 square foot of other accessory structures. So that was done very intently to make sure we're not filling up all of our open space.
So with that same limitation on the big shed and then the extra 900, does that matter whether the property is sized at an acre and a half or five acres?
The, the, under accessory dwelling units, the three to 900 doesn't matter on the size of the lot. So it's basically saying you can have a small, you know, three to, three to 900 square feet can be accessory dwelling. Under the accessory structure provisions, I think if you remember back to one of our joint meetings, staff and sort of suggested we rein those square footages in and I got thrown out of the room. So we went back and said, all right, we're not going to touch that. Those are adjusted based on, on the lot size. So up to an acre is 1,600, between one and two, I'll get the numbers wrong, it goes up between two and three.
So it is adjusted per the size of the acreage?
So your accessory structures can grow as your lot grows. The, the square footage that's would be allowed under these provisions for an accessory dwelling unit would not grow. It would, it would always be limited between, between three and 900 square feet. So regardless of your lot size, the intent there is, this is not intended to be a full-blown new residential structure. You know, we're not putting two houses on one lot. This is a limited size, still has the function of a house, you know, full bathroom, kitchen, bedroom, all that sort of stuff, but on a much smaller scale.
I think then, what, from what I'm hearing, that some of my concerns have been allayed. So I think if we go forward with this, with that amendment that we've already discussed, and I've already forgotten what the first discussion was on the amendment. If we add into it the two years, put it on the non-consent agenda, if we put those two things together as an amendment, vote on it like you discussed, I think that would allay my fears.
I think the only question I would have is, is the, the two-year not consent, non-consent. I would, I'm not sure how we incorporate that because we're dealing specifically with this item on the zone.
Maybe it's just a direction to staff, like you had said. Just say, you know, staff, let, we're, we're now going to be focused on these issues. Please give us a heads up.
And the, we could even have the minutes reflect that, that item. Or we could also ask staff to draft and have it as an item for a future meeting, an actual resolution directing, that would be maybe the, I think, the way to handle that.
I appreciate all this discussion and I, I think that that would work fine. I don't know if any of, anyone else? Thank you.
David, on this, on the subject, I, I do, I appreciate all the work that staff has put into it. And quite frankly, I support this proposed amendment, I guess, at this point, the red line, as, as written. I want to make sure I understand though, too, you, you outlined for Councilmember Martin that, that an accessory dwelling unit could never scale above 900 square feet regardless of lot size, correct? Regardless of whether it's attached or detached from the primary dwelling unit. And the only way then, in my mind, that I see that someone could get around that, so to speak, in other words, put a second accessory dwelling unit on their property would in essence be to request a rezoning of their property. Is that correct?
Correct.
So someone theoretically, if, if.
If they wanted more than one accessory dwelling or they wanted, yeah, if they're getting beyond a house and 900 square feet for one accessory dwelling unit, that would have to require some sort of rezoning.
And, and getting to that point, we don't and won't allow an accessory dwelling unit without a primary dwelling unit, correct? In other words, if they rezoned and replatted, so to speak, or carved out different areas of their existing property, we would not allow that 900 square foot structure without having a.
Yeah, so is you, taking a lot of assumptions here, but most likely if you're in a single family and they're wanting to do something of a smaller scale, they'd likely be going to an R2. In our R2 district, we did open for more housing styles and more housing choices. And so, you know, you might be getting to more of a duplex style or, and so there'd be bulk, there's bulk regulations already established for that, that if that was the case, if someone came in with that rezoning, we'd review all of that and see what, if it fit. And, you know, simply coming in, you know, that, that could be a challenging rezoning, you know, depending on the circumstances and, and what it's applying to. So we just have to look at that. But yeah, if it's beyond a single-family home and the accessory dwelling unit, whether attached or detached, we'd most likely be looking at some type of rezoning if there was something proposed. Which obviously comes to you and is hearing and all that sort of stuff. And you have wide discretion in reviewing those.
Okay. So if somebody wanted to tear down by the name of the lot, adjoining Councilperson Burkhart's home, tear down that house and build a tiny house, an 800 square foot house, they'd have to seek a rezoning for an R2.
Um, just, I mean, if they're just building a small house, that would have, they'd have to meet building code requirements on the, on the primary structure. So I'm not going to be able to recite those off the top of my head here tonight. But, I mean, you could certainly build a smaller house than what's there today under building code. And if that's your only unit, maybe I may not require, but they may not be required to do a rezoning, yeah.
Any further discussion? Councilman Cope, I saw you taking notes. Do you want to make a motion?
I'm going to try and we'll see how this goes. I'll, I'll make a motion, let me just pull this up. I'll make a motion to amend Chapter 177.01, accessory dwelling units as modified in the attached materials distributed by staff with a note that the parking reference shall include allowing it on dustless paved surfaces. And also amend the table 1.68.2, which shows the various R districts and the accessory dwelling unit uses. Second.
We have a motion and a second further discussion. Sam vote please.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
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 Motion passed. Councilman Cope, do you have another motion?
And I will, I'll move to approve ordinance, second reading of ordinance 1090 as amended.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam vote please.
Yes.
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 Motion passed. Item 7B, consider second consideration of ordinance number 1091, repealing and replacing Chapter 102 Storm Drainage System, Chapter 103 Storm Water Management Utility, Chapter 145 Post-Construction Storm Water Management, and Chapter 151 Tree Protection and Conservation. David.
Good evening. Again, this is second consideration. There have been no changes and no proposed changes since the public hearing on March 6th. And we haven't received any additional public correspondence on this particular item. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions for David?
Yes, I do, Mayor. So moving through the Iowa, well, it actually passed in the Iowa Senate is Senate Bill 455. And it's an act relating to the regulation of topsoil and stormwater on construction sites. And basically, I'm not a lawyer, but the way I, the way I've, I've read this and, and heard it explained, it's basically saying that a city or county cannot pass a ordinance, motion or resolution that regulates stormwater runoff or the restoration of topsoil that's more stringent than the current federal rules. It doesn't say it exactly like that. Is that how you, have you looked at this bill?
The last version I saw, I believe it references the state NPDES permit.
Okay, right.
Which we have an MS4 permit that references the state permit.
Right. And I know that cities, so in 2012, they passed a law, the Iowa Legislature did, that said, housing sites needed to put on four inches of topsoil. In 2015, it was, they say gutted. I don't know exactly what that meant, but it.
And that, that goes back to the NPDS for the state. So that was in the permit that then trickles down to all the cities that have an MS4 permit, and then that was taken out.
Yes. So since that time, some cities, and one of them is Clive, has implemented that they do require topsoil be put on these development sites. And so if this bill were to pass, a city like Clive could not, could no longer require that.
Correct.
So at our last meeting, there was some discussion about how we don't currently have any requirements for topsoil being placed on development sites. And in follow-up discussions, it was like, well, we'll just wait out this bill. And so what if, what if this bill does not pass? Then when could we put the required, if, if we chose to and wanted to add a requirement of topsoil being placed on development sites prior to, you know, installation of sod or seeding? That would be done as, how would we get that accomplished?
It would be an amendment to the, it'd be amendment specific to Chapter 87, which is part of this ordinance.
And I got to say, with the way they're moving, they might have it done in the next two weeks, one way or the other.
Yeah, in which case, we're probably coming back and looking at this whole ordinance because there's, there's other provisions in that code that, that would tie our hands in what we could regulate.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for David? If not, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 1091? Or second, do we have a motion to approve second consideration of ordinance number 1091?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second further discussion. Sam vote please.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7C, consider second consideration of ordinance number 1092, adopting an official zoning map.
Good evening. This is second consideration. There have been no changes since first reading and no additional public comments have been received to date. Questions are going to detail if needed.
Where are all your friends from the last meeting?
I don't know. I think they are outside playing.
You had a big turnout last week, so.
Your postcards work. Yeah. And I, I have continued to get calls, but no one's providing comment. They're just, what's going on? Once I explain it to them, oh, okay.
Any other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve second consideration of ordinance number 1092?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam vote please.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Motion passed. The next item is an overview of proposed Town Center Management Contract. Whoops. What did I skip?
7D.
Oh, I'm sorry. Item 7D, consider approval of the second reading of ordinance number 1093, amending the official zoning map for .54 acres from CD to CD3. Subject property is located at 505 Merle Hay Road, PCK is 2304.
This is second consideration. There have been no changes since first reading and no public comments received. Staff is recommending that we waive third reading and adopt and publish. While we typically don't waive third reading on a rezoning, in this particular case, it is a fairly minor boundary adjustment of an existing district. And upon advice of our city attorney, waiving third reading would avoid potential conflicts on publication in light of us adopting a whole new zoning map kind of on a similar timeframe. So for those reasons, we are recommending waiving third reading.
Questions for Clayton? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move approval of second reading ordinance 1093.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam vote please.
Martin.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have another motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve third reading and adopt and publish ordinance 1093. Wait, waive third reading. And of ordinance 1093 and adopt and publish, sorry.
A second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam vote please.
Cope.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Motion passed. Next item, 7E, overview of the proposed Town Center Management Contract. Adam.
Good evening. Back in November, the Johnston Town Center Association met to discuss kind of in the wake of businesses starting to open here in the Town Center, standing up the association. And as part of that, bringing on professional management for the association common properties. As a reminder, the association voting members is for the City of Johnston, the mayor, and then Andy Viss for Hanson Real Estate. So presently, it's been a kind of variety of city staff members that have handled a lot of these town center tasks. And the city has been the one paying the bill with these buildings opening. Going back to our 2021 development agreement with Hanson Real Estate for building one and two. For the first three years, after receiving full occupancy, Hanson Real Estate for the buildings would pay about 6.8% and 7.6% for building one and two of the overall common area maintenance costs. After those three years, they would be paying the percentage of the overall cost relative to their building square footage divided by the total actual square footage as constructed at that date in the town center. Grand State Hotel, um, and they're planning to meet with city staff later this week to talk about mobilization, getting construction. Uh, would be responsible for their percentage of the CAM costs uh in their entirety upon uh receiving their occupancy permit. And then the common area entertainment CAM costs are handled separately uh currently by the city. Uh, at that meeting, uh, back in November, Hanson Real Estate expressed interest in being the manager uh for the association. Uh, specifically Andy Viss uh would be that manager. Uh, city staffs worked with them successfully over the last several months. He's also involved in the leasing of the businesses here, so he does have some vested interest. Uh, they proposed a draft management contract that's circulated amongst city staff. Some other parties are attorney and insurance agents, uh, and what you have in front of you here tonight is kind of the final draft. It's been revised from that. I'll just cover briefly a few of the, the main terms of this. Uh, the duration would be twelve months uh with additional twelve-month renewals. Uh, it could be terminated by either party uh at any time with sixty-day notice uh and payment of work performed at that time. Uh, the fees would be uh fifteen hundred a month as a base uh payment plus five hundred dollars per commercial building that's been completed in the town center. So the initial monthly payment for the management would be three thousand dollars up to three thousand five hundred upon completion of the Grand State Hotel. Manager for the association is responsible for all communication relating back to the common areas, the tenants. Uh, they're responsible for sending the planning meetings, managing contractors such as DeBrees, who manages most of the lawn care and snow removal on the site. Uh, sending out the town center member assessments, uh, construction within that common area, maintenance, uh, accounting, and managing the assurance. I do have the map pulled up here. There are a few areas of exception to that. City of Johnston would retain complete control over the trailhead area, so the part eastern edge of the site. All property outlined here. Uh, and then technically, the north portion here is not part of the association, although we would continue to have the contractor mow that. Waiting further development as well. Uh, there are a couple areas as well that the city may uh continue to be more involved in, and the association may pay a feedback to specific departments such as the Parks Department for their work uh presently and planned for the future. Uh, the Parks Department would continue to mow the yard, uh, so the green space directly west of City Hall. And also handle snow removal and the splash pad uh on the patio space there. Uh, that's just a in our experience, you know, they're very good at doing that well. They want it to present very nicely. Uh, they're willing to do that, so there would be a bill back for the performance uh of those services to the association uh for the parks time spent doing that, uh, unless something were to change. Uh, just as a reminder, we do have budgeted in uh the city budget, hundred forty-five thousand dollars for twenty-three, twenty-four or for common area maintenance costs. Uh, so that would cover the management expenses that were anticipated as part of this contract. Not asking for any formal approval tonight, but any questions, comments, or concerns act to the association. I'd be happy to, to note and bring up.
Any questions for Adam?
Mayor, I do. A- Adam, I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly, that we, we will, the city will be uh billing or receiving a bill back for parks uh expenses regarding the maintenance uh clearing of snow and, and mowing of that yard area.
Specifically for the mowing, we have discussed of the yard. Uh, Parks does do the snow removal uh for the C-Hall property, which is not part of that common area maintenance cost, nor are the, uh, the private uh properties, if there's any snow removal or lawn maintenance within those kind of postage stamps. Uh, we haven't talked about splash pad maintenance. That's been viewed as more of a city service out there than part of the common area one. Uh, and John, I don't know, did we land anywhere on reimbursement for snow removal on the ice rink? That's not been fully fleshed out yet either, but the mowing portion, um, that was discussed, and we decided not to put that in the debris's contract, contract, but instead have a Parks Department bill for time served.
Okay.
Time served. I'm not sure if that's the right phrase.
There is a reference as well for five hundred dollars a month for each town center building, other than the concession building. Can you name those three buildings, just to make sure I understand which ones-
City Hall, um, and then the uh Back Pocket Brewery Building and the Athletico Building.
And why is City Hall included when, in essence, is exempted from all the services that the association would provide?
Uh, some of those services would be provided would be, you know, maintenance of the common areas in the parking lots. So we do park within those parking lots that would be served by um debris is the contractor paid by the association. Um, you know, the snow removal, I guess, and mowing um on that area, plus the three city-owned lots to the north would be common services, I guess, um used by us. Uh, but, you know, I think that's a fair question. We are participating in an unusual way in the uh in the services of the Town Center Association, but this is the proposal that we have today.
The other question I have, the Athletico Building, as we're just commonly referring it, does it have a full occupancy permit at present?
Uh, it does not. The restaurant portion of that, which is the western portion of that building, uh, is still unfinished. I I think it still has a dirt floor in there. Last I saw, I haven't seen the concrete been poured in there yet.
Is there anything in the contract uh that prorates then the five hundred dollars per building? Um, because in essence, it's not a complete building at this point in time?
I believe their full dues are going to be um applied as soon as the association stood up and the monthly billing occurs. I believe the full occupancy portion of that's going to apply to when they would switch over from their uh six point eight percent for that building to their full percentage of constructed buildings in the town center.
Okay.
But I don't believe the verbiage was as specific as full occupancy of when they started having to pay their dues. It's just specific in that uh language on when it turns over to that higher percentage. There are two different agreements there between the master development agreement back in twenty eighteen and the uh the twenty twenty development agreement between those two commercial buildings.
So, the, the three years in essence, though, doesn't kick in until full?
The duration of that three years at six point eight percent for the Athletico Building, the way I've read the contract, would not start until that building is fully occupied. The other building, um, as soon as Blue Bean moves in, would be fully occupied, so in the next month or so.
Okay. Occupied doesn't necessarily need to mean leased?
Occupancy permit. Um, so, yeah, they'll have an occupancy permit at that point. Um, you know, until they finish the floors, I would presume, and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but they won't have an occupancy permit until they meet all fire code and building code inspections. Is that fair to say?
Thank you.
Any other questions for Adam? Thank you, Adam. Item seven F, consider approval of claims in the amount of one million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and two dollars and fifty-one cents.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam vote please.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed. City administrator comments.
If we could circle back to the earlier discussion during the work session. Um, we were, where we left the discussion, and it is really important, we do get some dis- uh, direction from council this evening uh as we need to publish the notice, which I know isn't, the actual public hearing will be in the second meeting in April, but we need to publish the uh notice and, and get it to the Des Moines Register prior to our actual meeting, our next council meeting. So we do need to get some direction. Uh, so what I'd like to propose out there, uh, looking at the six items, and, and I think this is where I the direction I heard and kind of the comments I heard. So if I misspeak or there's such uh different thoughts, um, but I think the can, the um direction, the support that I think I have, or there is from the council, uh, we'd leave the neighborhood uh position in there. Um, we would delay uh the captain promotion for a year. Um, we'd leave the compensation pool at a half a percent. We would leave the aquatic center as funded, and that would be funded out of a local option sales tax. Uh, we would continue with the proposed transfer from loss uh for the capital equipment purchases that were outlined. Um, and then the, the calculations um for the business property tax credit that then results in that overall tax levy still of ten point eight five five one three. So, I guess if there's other changes, I know we went through all the decision packages this evening. Um, but I think, from what I heard, I think there's can um support for that. I know there's maybe individuals that don't like parts of that. Um, but I think there's overall um support for that.
Mike, I would, Mayor, apologize.
Sure.
I, I, I don't support that. Um, and item two specifically, the delay one year of the thirty thousand dollar decision package for captain promotions. Um, based on the impact to the general tax levy of less than two cents, I, I would uh strongly encourage others on the council to also consider putting that in.
I can support the document as outlined by, by the city manager. And, and I would suggest we all go around and maybe that that would be the easiest way to, that, do we have, do we have three plus votes for that or not? And if we don't, then we, otherwise, we can continue the discussion, but that would be my suggestion, so. Or however you want to do it here, but, but to me, I, I'm comfortable with what Mike has outlined, and I can support it.
I'm comfortable with what Mike has outlined.
Councilman ready?
Everything else works fine on that, except for funding the aquatic study. I'm not very keen on putting that much funds in aquatic at this point in time. Uh, everything else is good.
I'm sorry, Councilman Ready. What were you not supporting?
Uh, the aquatic study.
Okay.
Councilman Evans.
I'm playing with what Mike's proposed.
I think that one of the things, and, and uh, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, item number two there is not, is not exactly described correctly. We're not, we're not proposing, are we? Or this does not propose to delay delay any opportunity for an adjustment in those salaries for a year, but rather including them in with the entire compensation study. And then considering an adjustment if, if the compensation study shows that, that uh it's appropriate to do so.
Could I, excuse me, um, uh, Mike, excuse me for interrupting you, but could I, could, could I clarify, the reason that terminology that was used, delay one year was to make sure that the council is very aware that this will be a very high priority of the police chiefs in next year's budget. So I just didn't want you to think, I didn't want to say remove or delete, or I didn't want to use a word that meant it was going to go away forever. That's why the term delay a year was used. However you determine to do it with the salary study and what Mike had proposed is fine, but I want, I wanted you to understand what I used the word delay one year. It was to make sure that you folks knew it was certainly a priority of his, but his staff was willing to take, to know that other things are a priority. So that's, that's all, and I apologize.
I think the concern, Teresa, is that the word delay suggests that we, there is not going to be any action taken for a whole year.
I can understand why you, you would think that that's what I meant, so I apologize.
I want to make sure that everybody understands that that is not the intent.
No, and, and my intention, like I've talked to the chief and others, um, as we go through the c- classification work and the compensation work, that I think there's opportunities in the, in there to, to take a revisit at it. Uh, and there may be other opportunities throughout. Um, it's just, let's look at it, it's total versus a, a few positions.
And it's my understanding, Chief, that you're, you're, you're okay with that.
Yes, when we uh developed our priorities in the department, this was the least of the five, um, and that was at the request of the lieutenants, that it's a well-earned opportunity for them and, and certainly one of importance to retain good qualified people, but um we've got four decision packages that you're supporting. We're appreciative of that, and we'll put that to good use.
I have a question. Is it, if that's okay or not? Sure. Okay. So is the intent to, on the captain's item, to change the title, but delay the, the pay change, or what is, what is, is everything being-
How would, how would that happen, Chief?
Now, the, we, we want to do the, this is, this is a promotion, so we, we want to recognize the promotion with a new job description and with the compensation that's specific to that role. As, as the police department's evolved, so has the position. So, um, you know, taking the time to do the compensation study, we're going to still need that lieutenant's position in the future, so you know, we might make headway this year a little bit based upon the, the money of the compensation, but until we're, we're at an adequate compensation for a captain, I don't want to go through that promotional process because I don't want to cheapen that experience for them by doing it prematurely.
Okay. Well, I'm hearing that a majority are comfortable with what's being proposed. We have some concern around the uh the uh pool study and some concern around item number two, but the majority are supportive. So I think, I think that's the direction.
So, so staff is good, our intention is that we will publish um the public hearing um based on, on this direction then. And we'll do that, you know, so we won't have another council meeting between now and when we'll make that publication. Um, the meeting will still, the public hearing will still be the second meeting in eight. Okay?
And people can offer amendments as part of the budget discussion, as long as none of those amendments don't change the levy, correct?
Cannot go up.
So somebody could make a proposal to, uh, somebody could offer an amendment to strike the aquatic study if they desired.
Yeah.
Or the only thing you couldn't do is make a proposal that, that would have an impact of raising a lot, is that?
Yeah. Okay. Otherwise, I have no further comments. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, council comments, Councilman Evans.
Um, I had one, and I just, I was sitting here and I thought of this. Tom has brought up the flow chart. And I thought, man, that's a great idea. And then, you know, there's just, well, a zoning map. And then there's the TIF districts. And then to the, is it possible that we can create some kind of a cheat sheet or a little bound book that has all this stuff in it? So that, and maybe we give lists to staff of what we want to have in a little bound book that we can, like, each of us can keep, carry, and, and so that when this stuff comes up and we're in our office or in our home reviewing the agenda and we see what's coming up, we've got these in front of us instead of having to go try to find them in some hidden age somewhere. Just a thought. Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Can we put it in board docs versus bound books? Because we do have the library feature in board docs that we could house this information in.
I'm a paper guy, but if that's, if that's the consensus, I'm fine with it.
I think it could all go into board docs, and if somebody wants a printed copy, they can either print it themselves or ask staff to print it for them.
And I guess I'm thinking, there's, there's the same ones keep coming up. So maybe not a whole, you know, big, huge thing, but maybe the top five or the top ten things that we constantly refer to.
I mean, some of these items are really, like the zoning map and TIF maps, those are easy to put up.
Yeah.
You know, the org chart, we'll get that up there, but it, it takes time to develop. It's, it's, it's um, in fact, there's, there's actually an org chart. I don't know if this got put in during the meeting. Um, but, but there's actually an org chart in Borg Docs, um, but it's from twenty twenty-one. Uh, but, you know, so it's a little dated already. Those type of items to get more difficult because just a month can make it out of date.
But sometimes when you update them, it'd be helpful to know that, hey.
Yeah. It's staff time thinking, oh, I gotta go out and do that, but it, yeah.
Councilman ready?
Yeah, um, sorry. I'd like to thank all the staff and Mike, you were first here here, and you made the budget session deliver work hard on this and made it very good for all of us. And in spite of all this thing happening with legislature changing it on the last minute, you were able to get it up and running. Thank you, all the staff. All of you guys did this, well, work on the- All of you guys did this, well, work on the budget. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it.
Councilman Cope?
Well said, Sharish. I agree. Hundred percent.
I want to add to the thanks, though, my fellow council members for making themselves so available for kind of offline conversations about where their priorities were and are with regard to the budget and to Mike as well. He spent a lot of time this afternoon discussing things with me on the phone. He also got an earful of venting about this process and my experiences in it. And so I just appreciate all of your time and your patience as this is a different process than what we've undergone in the past, in large part because of circumstances outside of our control. And I I think we're all better because of it, and we certainly understand city processes better, not just the the budget process, but everything from how we compensate both union and non-union staff, and certainly how we evaluate and and try to cover our cost reserves and things along those lines. So well done, y'all, and thank you so very much.
Councilman Martin?
So I ditto on thank yous. Always an excellent staff, and they make it very understandable for those of us who don't like budgets and would rather just be outside doing other things. I want to go back to the SF four fifty-five. I think that's what it is, the Senate bill that passed that limits what cities could possibly do in terms of managing stormwater runoff and topsoil on construction sites during development. And I'm, I, at first, I wanted to do a resolution. I was going to ask for a resolution, but I figure if we don't get on this right away, a resolution is going to take too long. So I'm just going to ask my fellow council members, the mayor, any staff to contact Eddie Andrews in the House, our representative, or or else also, or also Shannon Litham, probably said that wrong, who's the chair of the committee that's going to be reviewing this stormwater and topsoil bill. And ask that you let them know your thoughts, and hopefully your thoughts are, it's not good for us, especially for a city like us who had two hundred people impacted by that nine-inch rain, and and that was a drop in the bucket compared to what Urbandale and Clive and other cities got in terms of that horrendous rain. We've got to do all we can to collect and keep all our valuable rainwater. And so just putting it out there, the, it was, I don't know what the House number is. I know that the Senate number was SF four fifty-five. And it's a no for me.
I can, the Iowa Stormwater Education Partnership today published a kind of a white paper press release that has some information. I'll forward that to the council just so you have it.
Wonderful. We need to pass it around and share it because, as the mayor said two weeks ago, one of the biggest complaints we get from homeowners is they don't have topsoil on their sites.
Just replay, just put back down what they dug up on the.
And if the argument is, it's cheap, you know, we're making the houses too expensive. It's not easy to bring in topsoil later. You might be able to afford the hot tub later, but re-putting, replacing topsoil on your yard is a one-time thing. Thank you.
I too want to add my thanks to everyone for your hard work during this budgeting process this year. Councilman Burkhart did, you know, recognize that we had a, had a different year this year, and it was particularly difficult given what, you know, the legislature did to us partway through. But I, you know, I I do appreciate the fact that everybody pulled together, worked hard, you know, gave a little, took a little, compromised along the way, and I think that in the end, you know, we've got a budget that we can all feel proud of and that we that we can defend to any, anyone, our residents or others outside of, outside of our community on what we've proposed to do here. So I just want to, want to thank all of you, Ash, you to hang in there with us. We'll, we'll get, we'll get to the end. But it it does, it is a team effort. And we just have to to work together as a team to get it done. So again, thank you very much. And with that, we are adjourned.
Hey, are you going to the adjournment meeting tomorrow? Okay, I won't be able to.
Am I, am I supposed to be picking these up from here? I apparently have four months worth of magazines I haven't been.
Yeah.
Is there like the box for us or something?
Yeah. That's what, so what they'll do is they'll bring all the stuff that's in the box and put it out here.